Welcome to the September 12, 2022, meeting of the Council of the City of Cape Junction. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance and review.
And if things move along well, I hope to bring the contract to you for your approval at the next meeting. So that's what's going on here. And so if that all happens according to schedule, the design will take place between October and January. And then from February to April, there'll be constructability review, the constancy meeting, and construction documents. And then it will go to bid for construction, think around how people may, and then I hope in construction management. So lots of, lots of work to do, you know, in all those steps, but that is the current plan. And the other thing I want to mention is that the Library Foundation is hosting the Illinois Valley Chamber readers at the library on Wednesday, September 28th at 10:00 a.m. And I think everyone's welcome, so certainly council members, sure. So that will be a nice thing, and the Library Foundation director will be there, and I'll be there as well. That's all I have from now. There's a few more details in your updates in the packet with this file. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to continue with our council liaison updates. Council one, Mr. Lane?
Yeah, I went to IVFD board meeting this afternoon, which was great. I love listening to those ads about training and stuff that they do. It was pretty cool to get the chance right behind Station 1 and see that monstrosity of the training center. It was really pretty cool. Glad to see that stuff happening. The grant for additional staff that was able to come out here. One was sent to the run free flyer, which enabled our existing staff to stay here in the valley, which is exactly what that was designed for, so it's doing its job. I think that's a great thing for us.
Thank you.
Yes, good news on the partisan recognition. We had a meeting last week. And we actually have a date now where things are going to be happening. They're shipping our playground equipment, our new ADA compliant playground equipment, on September 29. And if the weather continues to be so nice and we get the equipment in, we will be partnering with the media, both print as well as broadcast media, to have a major groundbreaking ceremony where one of our commission members will be actually taking the golden shuttle. So things are actually happening in the park, so that people know we're doing it. And that's what I got.
Thank you. Council members.
Big thing that I intended was the Small Cities Meeting for the Lead of Oregon Cities last week. Mayor, I both attended, and I really enjoyed that meeting. I always enjoy those meetings. It's good to talk with people that are in other cities and find out what's happening in the region. And so that was really nice. One of the big things that's happening is they're getting a new city administrator, and I suppose I shouldn't say it, but he's our own Brian Nolan, who's sitting in the front seat. And he will start next week, so that's, that's good and bad. It's sad for us, but it's good for Rhode River. So I'm glad for them and I'm glad for Brian. There were some other things that were brought up, especially a lot about Rhode River since the meeting was there, about the, about Rooster Park and all the work they've done. But the big thing that we found out was from CIS about heat and smoke regulations, new ones from OSHA, and needing to find out how that affects us, and it certainly does. And I would love to see our chamber do some sort of an informational meeting so that the other business owners in the area that may be affected by this could learn some things. But that was very informative and very helpful. So that was a big thing that I did besides attending things for Ivy House.
Thank you. Council leaders.
Life's pretty simple. All the schools are back in session, sports are going. Everybody seems happy, other than that.
Yeah, thank you. That was sweet. Well, I have actually a fair amount of stuff that's been going on. I attended the, also the Small City Gathering. It was, it was always good to get with other small cities that are in just Jackson and Josephine County, and they had a really lovely surprise party for Mark Regals, who's been in the city many, what, 25 years? Yeah, 28 years, long time. So that was, that was a good attendance. I also attended the Oregon Mayors Association meeting, which was in Newport, September, in August. And it was a really good time. It was over 100 mayors there, and it's a real opportunity for us to get together and share what's happening in our cities. We had some good presentations on social media, getting local people involved, getting the difficulties sometimes of getting people involved in local government. We also, the mayors all had to bring a basket from their city to representing their city and Cape Junction management, and I really want to thank Bear Images and Bigfoot Printing and Taylors, and also Wildcraft, Wildcraft, Amy Lessin. They helped put things in the basket, that basket. Actually, the person that got our, it was a sign bit, the person that got it actually came to me after and said how pleasing it was. It was exactly what they were looking for. That's, they were really good. But it was, it was a good opportunity to meet with other mayors. I also attended this, this week, the Southern Oregon Regional Economic Development High, which is a nice stand. Let's see, what we're incorporated, yes, so ready. And they had a dinner in Medford. We have presentations by, let's see, presented there, it was presentations by, in Harry and David's. They talked about a lot of leadership changes. There was also Amy Kitchen was there. I vaguely knew that there was Amy Kitchen in Medford, White City area, but they actually have a plant there that does all their pizzas, some of their soups, and they hire, what, 800 employees? So that was very interesting, and also heard from Boise Cascade. And then it gave people an opportunity to just talk about what's happening economically in their cities. So that was good information and another good opportunity to meet with other mayors. That's pretty much all I have to leave down. So moving on to the next. Next agenda item is public comment. Did you receive any requests for public comment?
Yes. No, no written files. Hey, everybody. Wendy Jones, 4241 Old State Road, Cape Junction. I am following up on River Stars Performing Arts. Last year, we used the pavilion every Friday for 24 weeks, maybe more than that, to hold our youth dance and theater program there, also community dance and theater classes. We loved using this space last year. Got us around some COVID restrictions, more freedom for families to play on the playground, or older siblings to classes, and a really nice opening space. We're really appreciative of all of the improvements. You've definitely noticed that you put the gutters on, which is going to really help the sweeping of the rainwater out of the space before class this year. And the tables are great, moving the old roofing tins out, so we're really applauding your progress. But the one thing I put on the application that I wanted to talk to you about today was that we are not able, in good faith, to send children, first in kindergarten, first second grade, over to the regular bathrooms. We don't know who's in there, and it's far enough away, we can't really monitor them. So we were asking for a reduced rate or a discount to use the bathrooms in the pavilion for free. And normally you charge $50 per day to use the kitchen. We could not be using any of the kitchen facilities. We just need the bathrooms, for the reason that we can't trust sending people off on their own. So if you don't ask, you don't try. And I believe that this is the way we've always done it. Kills all kinds of creativity, which is the antithesis of our program. So I wanted to be here and ask, even if the president is that we don't do this. So I wanted to ask for either a reduction in the rate or a free rate just to use one for the bathrooms in the pavilion. So I'd love for you to consider that if not now, if not today, in the future, when the pavilion requests. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other requests for public comments? All right, so we're going to keep moving along because we have a big full agenda. Agenda item number five is a request for OLCC approval, the replay. And I'm going to entertain a motion and a second to authorize signature on the application for the replay.
And we, um, permanently, OLCC's the application for the rest of the year.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from Council one? Council two?
I'm good.
Council three? Council four?
Oh.
And I don't have any comments, so call and vote. How to vote? Council one?
Aye.
Council two?
Aye.
Council three?
Aye.
Council four?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, agenda item number six, a resolution 960 declaring 389, 374, 379, 388, and 389 Wells Drive nuisances. And I'd like the city recorder to read resolution 960.
A resolution declaring property a nuisance, resolution 960, whereas the property is located at 349, 374, 379, 388, and 389 Wells Drive, Cape Junction, Oregon, Assessor's Map 39-78/21-DA, tax lots 804, 807, 815, 812, and 823 are in violation of Cape Junction Municipal Code 8.08.090, grass weeds and noxious vegetation. Whereas the City of Cape Junction staff recognized the poor condition of the properties known as 349, 374, 379, 388, and 389 Wells Drive, and identified the properties as seen in violation of City Municipal Code and immediate fire danger. And whereas on August 17, 2022, the City of Cape Junction, in compliance of Municipal Code 8.08.170, notified owner of 349, 374, 379, 388, 389 Wells Drive, a violation of reference tier in. And whereas representatives of the state of living trust owner of said properties has made no attempt to contact the city to abate the violations of reference tier in. And whereas the City of Cape Junction has initiated actions from the perceived with designated nuisance violation process to include violation witnessed and documented by staff and city hall on the city recorder, nuisance notice dated August 17th mailed certified mail, and a notice of municipal code violation hung at the properties referenced here in. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Cape Junction in accordance with terms set forth in Municipal Code 8.08.170 and 8.08.260. The council hereby declares that as of August 17th, properties known as 349, 374, 379, 388, 389 Wells Drive, Cape Junction, Oregon, remain in violation of Municipal Code 8.08.170. Therefore, the owner of said property shall be responsible for a $500 penalty for each day the nuisance remains on the property from the date of the notice through the date the nuisance is abated, either by the owner responsible or the city. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption, passed by the City Council this 12th day of September. Resolution 960, a resolution declaring property nuisance.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion and second to accept resolution 960. I made a motion to accept resolution 960.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Council one?
Is that $500 per day per property?
Yes.
Council two?
Um, yes, just curious. Are those properties occupied? No.
Thank you. Council three?
I don't really have any questions.
Council four?
Is it more dangerous to have them treat it right now and risk fire than it is to be?
There's actually organizations that hire that will bring water to the site and load them down and do the whole process, which is going to be more expensive than if they would have dealt with it initially.
Oh, no doubt.
Okay, hearing no further discussion, now you vote. Council one?
Aye.
Council two?
Aye.
Council three?
Aye.
Council four?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Resolution 960 passes 5-0.
Okay, agenda item number seven is public hearing. And this is a continuation of the site plan review for 25401 Redwood Highway at RV Park. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. I am suspending the council meeting and opening of public hearing where the city council members will act as a planning commission during the, that public hearing. Public hearing is now open. So all the official things we have to say. Tonight, we are conducting the second continuation, or this is the third. This is the third continuation of the public hearing originally heard on August 8, 8, 2022. The public hearing is regard, is regarding a site plan review for a major development requested by Brian Westerhoff. This development entails a 61-unit RV park on 9.53 acres, zone commercial located at 25401 Redwood Highway, Assessor's Map 39-08-16, tax lot 807. This is a quasi-judicial hearing decision. In a quasi-judicial ruling, input must be grounded in the relevant code. And if the application meets the code, the commission, commission must approve it. This city council will now act as planning commission and will sit quasi-judicially. The hearing will proceed as follows. After the preliminary legal matters, staff will make a presentation followed by the applicant. Any citizens who wish to address the issue will be given the opportunity. Finally, there will be time for rebuttal by the applicant. The applicant will have 15 minutes initially, plus 10 minutes for rebuttal. Any members of the audience that wish to speak must sign their name and address on the yellow sign of cards and provide the card to the city recorder prior to speaking. The planning commission members may ask questions of the applicant's staff or anyone else who testifies. I now call the order, to order the public hearing. Legal matters, burden improved criteria and appeal rights. The application, the applicant has the burden of proving that the application is consistent with the City of Cape Junction's developmental code, comprehensive plan, and any applicable municipal code revisions. The criteria that must be addressed in this hearing is Municipal Code 17.14.240, site plan review, Municipal Code 17.28.100E, recreational vehicle parts special standards, Municipal Code 17.32.020, off-street parking, Municipal Code 17.14.0380, decision-making procedures, Oregon Uniform Fire Code, Illinois Valley Fire District access road requirements, City of Cape Junction Comprehensive Plan, and City of Cape Junction Transportation Plan. Any testimony, argument, or evidence that speakers provide must be directed at these criteria or at some other criteria in the code or a comprehensive plan which you believe should apply to this decision. Your testimony would be, if your testimony would be repetitious, but you would like the opportunity to appeal the decision, you must put your name and address on a yellow sign of card and hand this card to the city recorder before speaking. Only those who have, who have appeared before this planning commission in person or in writing will have standing to appeal this item. Prior to the conclusion of the public, first public hearing on an application, the applicant or anyone who takes part in the hearing may request a continuance or ask that the council be left open to present additional information. If there is such a request, the council planning commission will either continue the public hearing to a date certain or leave the record open for at least seven days, seven days of argument or testimony. Raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the council planning commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on, based on that issue. Number three, conflicts of interest. Do any members of the council wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest or bias? Council one?
No.
Council two?
No.
Council three?
No.
Council four?
No.
And the mayor is no. Ex parte contacts. Do any members of the council wish to report any site visits or ex parte contacts? Council one?
Yes.
Council two?
Yes.
Council three?
I made a site visit, yes.
Council four?
Yes.
And the mayor made two site visits. Number five, challenges to planning commission's jurisdiction. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of a council to act as planning commission to hear this matter? No challenges. Challenges to impartiality of any member of the planning commission. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the impartiality or ex parte disclosures of any member of the planning commission? I see no challenges. This concludes the legal matters. Our next, number seven, is the staff reporter's presentation, and let's proceed with this.
Mayor Marcel, for the record, I'm Brian Nolan, contractor planner from Rhode Valley Council Governments. At one point, I think all of you expressed that you had made at least one site visit today, tonight, during discussion. It would be important if you gained anything from that site visit that would impact your decision that you discussed at the hearing, so that the applicant and anybody else attended could hear what you learned at the site visit that may impact your decision. So with that, we've looked at this item a number of times. Mayor stated it's a proposed RV park, 2540 Redwood Highway. And in your packet, under item seven, you have the original application, earlier comments that were provided by staff, staff report, and neighbors. And then on the top of about eight pages, you have additional new information from the applicant. So over the past several meetings, we've discussed this. And I think you really reviewed the site plan criteria, recreational vehicle park criteria, parking criteria, fire code, et cetera. And I think you really came down to four issues that you needed more information regarding. Those were, there's a requirement for an RV park, our code, to have site of steering fencing and landscaping as a buffer. The applicant is asking to solely use landscaping at this time. So they provided some additional information that you can speak tonight about their request to use to allow, so this time it's just landscaping as a screening. The next item is the drive aisles. According to our code, RV parks are supposed to have paved drive aisles. The applicant's proposing an alternate plan for the drive aisle condition and requested you allow them five years, a time period within five years to pave all drive aisles. So in those, there's additional information on that, and the applicant can speak more directly to that. There's also an issue, according to our code, RV parks with over 30 spaces are required to have two access points. They've worked with fire district, proposed to propose a slightly alternate plan. It's their request that you would approve based on fire district, this access truly has one access point, but in essence, two access ways. The other item is specifically in our code that states that there would be no propane storage in our RV park. They're, again, presenting some information to the fire district and have tentative approval, provided that they follow building and safety guards. So I think those are the four issues that we really are left with tonight to determine if you find that the applicants have met the burden. So with that, I'm here to help guide us through this process, but I think really it's time for the applicant to address those four issues and explain some of the additional information they've provided. Because this is a fairly complex issue, my suggestion for you to consider would be, at some point, if the public hearing is concluded and we have all the information needed, I would suggest that you might consider making a motion approving or denying this request and providing staff with guidance on potential findings specifically tied to these four issues. Because I think we're aligning the rest of the standards we're dressed. In that manner, staff can prepare written findings, staff can come back at the next meeting so that you can review that, written findings, and vote to approve that. So that would require then a vote to approve or deny, and then some guidance on conditions. Staff will come back at the next meeting with a set of written findings that you would then vote to approve or edit. So are there any questions at this time that I can help address? And a reminder, if you saw anything at the site that might really sway your opinion, such as viewing the existing vegetation, would be key to discuss those in the poll.
Council one? Yeah, so this, I've been thinking about this for quite a while now. So I did a little research on site obstruction and its definition. And most of it regards to, like lawful terms, is 10% per square foot. So visiting the site, I see that the existing vegetation in the mountains and the site, what do you mean? But seems to meet that, that criteria, 10%, by per square foot. And so with adding to that would just make it more, or less visible that it's on the outside. I think would suffice as a definition for the fence. Now, the code doesn't necessarily say wood, concrete, metal, any of that stuff. So I had to kind of take a step back from it and say, okay, what's the actual definition? Remember that came up. So that's kind of where I'm at on events. The paving, I appreciate the site plan and the, struggling to find the word here, the facing that you guys put, and I appreciate that. And I had to think long and hard about this one too, but I think five years is appropriate timeframe for that to happen. Because also in the code, I didn't see where it said that the park had to be paved before operation of the park. Maybe I missed that somewhere. So I think it's appropriate to, these guys up and running, they're making some money so that they can pay this thing within the five-year timeframe. And that's kind of what I've been thinking about this whole last week. As far as the propane and the fire lane, if the fire, fire district signs off on it, then I'm fine. But that's, that's kind of where I'm following.
Thank you.
Council two?
I, I went to the site with the Director of Public Works, Holy Snow, and it was very beneficial to see land and slope and the proposed fire lane that is mentioned in here. It's the one that goes down the hill next to the actual ingress and egress.
Correct.
Because one of the things that was discussed was the possibility of approaching Siski, about, because that's their land adjacent to this one, about possible easement coming through there from their parking lot over to the site, which could provide a better, at least, I think, a better fire access rather than dealing with that hill. So I don't know if any discussion just happened.
I think the applicant can speak to that, and they do have a proposed potential future extension, but I think the applicant can speak for it.
Okay.
Potential future extensions of Siski's.
Okay, the only other thing that I noticed, we also, the Alex took us over to an area where they had the gravel that had been compacted, and it was similar to what the applicant is talking about. And I think that'll be sufficient initially, and then I think the five-year plan is probably best not to offer.
Some comments? Thank you. Council group?
I learned a lot from my site visit. I found that it's a beautiful location. But I think that it's just a super place. But I was not thrilled with the idea of not having fences. I see it as a safety issue as well as side of the screen now. I recognized that when we were there visiting, it was empty and not with a bunch of RVs on it and without the trees that they're going to put at each side and all that other good stuff. So I, I tried to imagine what it would look like completed. But I still know this community, and I still think that having a fence around it just makes sense and will ease your guys' minds and your, and your customers' minds. So I'm kind of stuck on that one. So I'm kind of stuck on that one. That one kind of gets to me. I'm also concerned about the two access for, um, the fire lane. I'm not real thrilled about that plan because I s- the proposed plan. Um, because I still see why you wipe that. I still see clients or customers using that as egress when we're ready up that road, and I just have a concern that that's just gonna create. What?
Wait.
Let's not have a conversation on the fact. Um, I recognize that they know way better about this than I do, and, and please, my hat's, my hat is off to you two and, and your whole team. Um, but I s- still am concerned about that egress. The other two issues I can address. I, I'm not concerned at all about the propane, because I think that's, um, I really like that you have the propane, um, propane in the bathrooms and such. I think that also makes sense. So, um, paving I'm still up in the air about. We made the code for specific reasons, and that's why we, we devised it. When we did. And, um, the idea of the, uh, first park, um, people want to make changes. I just think by the time we get to the third or fourth, we won't have a code left, is what I'm, so I'm concerned about. Because there would be so many, so many variances. So I'm real inclined to say, say, stick to the code that is, uh, we have to focus.
Thank you, Council four.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll start with the, the fire lane. I, I'm not comfortable with pan lined road. I mean, all blessings to the fire department, but they need to be able to get in there, and people don't obey that when they're trying to escape. And so I'm concerned with that. Um, the five year plan, I think is too long, gonna be too much turnover and too much stuff that's forgotten about. That's just the way that small towns work. Uh, to stay on top of it, I'm not comfortable with five years. Um, as far as the, uh, the trees and the other shrubs for, uh, for your fence, I'm not sure how much of, how deep you guys cut in where the, where the tree line is in comparison to your property line, how deep the forest is that's yours versus how deep the forest is that's everybody else's. And so my concern is if a neighbor developed and they came up, and now you've only got five feet, six feet of forest there, then you're number near the ten percent that you would about. And so that's, uh, that would be my concern there. Uh, the propane, I'm fine with. Um, I am, I'm okay with just embrace period on the paving. Uh, I understand, you know, getting revenue to be generated. I just, I'm not okay with the five years and everything else next to it.
Thank you. Did you, did you have one more comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to the fire lane portion of it. I had a chance to speak with Dick and Jeez tomorrow this afternoon about that. And about being able to take progressive steps to keep the public from using that. Um, it is part of his job to monitor that sort of thing, so if he sees that there are people parking there or working, whatever, they can start putting up more things to deter the public from using that. Uh, that particular area, uh, all the way up to certain barriers that would act similar to, um, railroad gates, if you know, that sort of thing. So he's already thinking about it, so I think that's, you know, forefront as well. Uh, I think that's all I have on mine.
Thank you. I was, it was very useful going up there. It is a really nice spot, uh, for an RV park. I think it would be a real asset in our community. Um, that the issue, I was surprised though, it wasn't as much existing vegetation in places where I thought they, they would, it really needs to be for privacy, which is on the, the north and south and the east side. The west side has the big hills, so I don't think that's, that's a, a necessary thing. And I just didn't see enough vegetation around the other areas that, to really add to. Um, and so I, I do think a fence might really, I mean, I love vegetation and I think it's nice to have, but I think it for privacy, you're gonna probably need something more than just vegetation. It is, there is, it is an area that's surrounded by commercial, uh, zone property, so there's a real likelihood that, that some point it will be developed, and that's a good thing too. Uh, and there's a lot of evidence for homeless, of homeless, um, use up there, so that is an issue that might continue, and that's another reason why fencing might, might be, uh, a good idea. The paving, I, uh, I don't have as much issue with. I think you do have a plan for, uh, paving it, what, as you phase things in, um, five years may be too long, I don't know. Uh, but I appreciate that you put a lot of thought into this. The fire lane, we didn't look at it that really carefully agreed. Um, there are some issues of people wanting to use fire lanes. You know, if they need to, there's the op, we looked at that other possibility of creating a whole lane that would go over through Siski, but that probably is a little bit more complicated. And I really appreciate the fire department's willingness to, to work with something and, and monitor something that, uh, will will continue to work over time. So those are the only comments I have. So the next se- uh, section is the applicant's presentation, and, uh, the applicant will have fifteen minutes, uh, to complete the presentation.
Good evening, I'm Brian Lester Howe. Um, good to see you guys all again. Uh, so yeah, I'd like to just address basically the items that you brought up in your discussion. Um, and then of course, anything else you want, you want me to address. I think those are the main items that we need to resolve tonight. Um, starting out with the, um, the fire lane. So we worked with, um, the reason we asked for the continuance last time, by the way, was to make sure that we were on the same page with that ODOT, our department, and ourselves, all on the same page with the way that fire lane proposal connects to the driveway and, uh, how it would look. And so, um, we measured everything out, how wide the lane would give at the point of connection, and how it tapers down and connects inside on our side of the right of the line to, uh, driveway. And then we, we chalk that, um, marked out with like kids sidewalk chalk on the driveway. Met Cameron out there, yeah. And it was, it's plenty wide to make it work. That driveway is, is, is a nice width, um, in there. At the same time, two other vehicles are coming in or going out, um, there's going to be three vehicles there. And then you just taper it wire as we built up the wire properly. We provided exhibit that happened at last two minutes on Thursday. Um, the way that connection works is yeah, I call it exhibit two, the angry and fire lane. So it's like that. Um, so you can see we're tapering in on our side of the property line, which is, uh, what ODOT wanted to see. We're tapering out to a twelve foot wide lane. It would mark, no party fire lane. Um, as far as other people using that lane, um, we discussed that with, with, um, the fire department also. And we thought at best you just start with marking it. Um, and then they're just gonna, they're gonna keep track of it if they see people using it for another purpose. Then, um, at the last meeting, we brought some, uh, they're called rebound for the monitors. Um, they just stick out down the road, and fire trucks can ride over and they can just fall over. Um, I guess other people could do that too, but people don't because they're a point of danger to the car. So, um, we thought it wouldn't be too attractive. They brought those lined up all along the side of our entrance, but so it's kind of like the last resort for us to put them up if we need to. Um, but we'd rather not. Um, but I think that's good, that's good compromise. I think that would keep people out of that, if the science doesn't harm. Um, the other reason that I think this proposal works for the fire is that, um, it's pretty steep grade there. You guys all knew the size, you saw that. Um, I doubt that people are gonna wanna park in that area because they have to walk up that hill to just to store, let alone in, in spaces or services that were often on property. So, um, that is I think that's what I have to say on the fire one. So if you guys want to, while we're on that topic, you want to address anything else?
Do you want to go ahead and finish the rest of the presentation?
Okay.
All that's for comments.
Sure. Um, so the fencing. Um, we have between, what do we say there, five and eighteen deep of vegetation left all the way around the site. So even if the neighbors come and they cut down everything up to the edge of our, edge of our property, um, we're still gonna have a significant amount of vegetation out there. I'm sorry, we didn't have mark, the perimeter mark for you when you went out there, but um, we had that timber harvested that was, um, we kept that much around the perimeter. So I think they'll be in a vegetation, in plants where we would plant however many plants we need to of those, uh, two varieties that we submitted pictures of last time. The, the pine, the cedar.
Bird cedar?
Yeah. Yeah. And we will consider other vegetation also, if, you know, if that was your guys' pleasure. Uh, but those are the two that, uh, recommend by the ones who bought it. They both grow fast, they're pretty native. It was one of the things we asked them to consider and to discuss. Um, so that's our, our preference is that we proceed with the landscape for, kind of just supplemental landscape for the site's general design. Um, we do have we do have an alternative, but, but, um, that we could use, uh, a KAWA as, use on other projects. We could use this if if it's absolutely necessary for us to add some fencing, um, but I'm waiting for it to show this to you guys, you know? I think I'll just show it now that I've talked about it. So, so this could be an alternative. Um, so we would just use that, oh, that could hear. If we did it, we would use it just, um, again, on as a basis. Just like we would use the supplemental landscape. Where, where it was, where it's needed, you know, we're not, we're not, we're not gonna be able to put that all the way around, just where it is.
Brian, can you email me?
Sure, yeah. I mean, that would be our second, if, if, if we can't go with the, just using landscape. So I'll just speak to, um, uh, Council on Miles concerned us fencing and security. Um, these would need, none of these are going to be security events, obviously. Those are their sites and everything, so. Um, if we need security fencing, we would, we would add that up another day. That's what.
I'm sorry.
If we need security, then, you know, if it turns out that we need security fencing, then, um, we're proposing maybe add one, add one. And the code is asking us for security fencing, ask for site of security. So then we move the standard appropriately then. Okay, paving. So uh, we provided an exhibit for how we're proposing phase our paving in. Paving is a huge expense, and it's still, prices are coming down now, but there's still because the building price, they're still really high, and paving is really expensive. So we're proposing to phase our paving still. Um, I don't know if you guys can print out the exhibit in color. I had a little bit of a hard time myself.
We couldn't print it in color, so I emailed it to him.
Okay, so everybody get to see the blue and the green? Yep, yes, yeah. About the same size. So the blue, we're proposing, so the gray area, all around the entry, the highest circulation area. Entry area, where people are checking in and checking out. Um, we're gonna paint that right off of that. So we're gonna open that area to you. And then, um, the blue area, which is the second most highly circulated area, and as many turning movements as we can reasonably get in there. Um, that is our first phase blue. Um, it's a pretty big chunk of paving, we're proposing we'll do that within the first three years. And then the green, which is the best of everything, little parking area is where the rest. Um, the four fire stuff. So we would open, the blue and the green area, this would be, um, a well-grated gravel. Um, we got a clean, well-grated gravel top that we find again. So that would minimize dust, and, uh, we have a variety of ground sizes, so it has, it doesn't roll around. Um, and then, um, if dust was a problem at all, even after that, we would use some of those dusting programs, chemicals, like we talked about, uh, last week. I think it's a, it's a de-ice and solve. Um, that using Florida is one of the you just apply that when the roads are kind of damp a little bit, and then that, um, consolidates the small part against the old. Get kicked out when people ride around. Um, and last time I provided some cuts. You want any more information, um, you probably find some more, but, but, but those cuts, cut sheets are the main factor of how the product works. The other thing, so I think that addresses all the items that, um, you raised. There was a couple other things that we addressed in the supplemental submission last week. Uh, one of them was the, uh, way that we're connecting the water system. So, um, we had initially proposed, uh, connecting up to the water system inside part, and then we go to a public line, go to staff line. Um, then we were gonna have, uh, allowance for a public line to connect to a neighborhood property's pedal water. Um, that was not going to be very important by, uh, uh, C O G convention, so we decided to just connect down there. But Alex suggested one more. So that exhibit, C one point one, I provide our C three point. C one point one. C one point one. Is the water system. C three point two. C three ones are. Yeah, C three point zero, the water. Shows that ball down by Highland. And right close to the existing fire height, so that's your marker when you're out there. That's all right there. And then everything on the other side of the wall is our line. Streetside was C one. If you have anything else I need to cover. So if you have any questions, I think that I just talked about. If you ask.
Any questions about someone?
No questions. I just wanted to comment that, um you know, I have to think that in the position we're in right now, we're not compromising our city code. Um we are putting some timeframe on it, um but the way that I'm reading this, the way that I'm reading the code, I don't feel like we're letting anybody get away with anything with this current project.
Counsel two?
No, nothing.
Counsel three? I don't have anything right now. Counsel four?
I still don't think that five hundred fifteen feet is adequate for privacy points. That's it.
Okay. Okay, so the next part is topic testimony. We will now open the hearing. Well, thank you very much. Thank you. We will now open the hearing for a comment. If you wish to testify during the series, you must complete a yellow card. That would be hard if you buy the card to the city recorder before approaching the podium. You will have three minutes to speak. If you have any written material or other evidence you would like to receive, please provide that at the beginning of your comment period. The city recorder will place a copy of any provided materials in the permanent record for the hearing. Let's begin with speakers speaking in support of this site plan review. Do we have any speakers in support of? Okay, seeing no raised hands or eyes or whatever, I will now open the floor to speakers wishing to speak in opposition to this site plan review. Seeing no opposition, we will move on. We don't need any rebuttal. Questions of the staff? Does the staff have any further comments or clarification regarding the application?
It appears that the council is on track of what I think four remaining items are. It's like there's been some discussion. Again, my suggestion would be, once you've reached some kind of conclusion and action through a vote, that one path you might consider is in requesting that approval or denial be voted on with the condition that you forward comments to staff, directing staff, provide written findings. We'll come back to the next meeting and see whether you could scrutinize each word and make sure that we record everything correctly. That makes sense. So most larger cities do that. You take a vote on the action item and then for following meeting, you will get the actual written findings. Staff has time to make sure they've incorporated the discussion correctly and then you can look at the verbiage and make sure that you are voting to approve a good decision. That records everything that was in the motion.
So then council would make a second motion and they follow the meeting to include all comments.
So in, in land use hearings. The first vote is a vote to take action, but the actual legal decision is not done until written findings are signed by, in this case, the mayor. So you're taking an action item and vote, but you're not actually coming up with written findings until they're approved by the mayor and signs. My suggestion would be, it takes some time, look at what we said tonight and previous meetings. Based on a vote, we then prepare written findings and come back at the next meeting to make sure they state exactly what you guys. That's one path. The other path is just to say, I vote to approve or deny. Gives specific suggestions how to alter the staff and court conditions, but I think that there probably will be some very specific conditions that come out of discussions.
Does any member of the council commission have any questions for the staff? Or yeah?
Counsel one?
Nope.
Counsel two? No. Counsel three? Counsel four?
No.
Okay, um. Have we received any other requests for continuation motions? No. Okay, I would entertain a motion from the planning commission for continuation of a public hearing while speaking. All right. So no continued. So no, no request for continuation, that's for that, right? All right, so if no continuation is requested, I'm now closing this public hearing and convene, reconvene in the council meeting. I would entertain a motion and a second to approve or approve the conditions or disapprove at the table. Given the, how, how the, our planner, so contingent on the findings. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with conditions that staff has provided, the four conditions that we've been discussing. With the base paving. Propane, fire lane, your physical from the fire district. And the ten percent per square foot site of steering fence with lanes.
So. We have other conditions.
So that all the conditions in the staff report, plus the four that we just listed, could you clarify the last one again that you stated?
The site of steering fence, ten percent per square foot.
And so does that then include the finding that the, so would you restate them? Can you restate the motion?
Okay, so maybe, maybe I can rescind. It sounds like your suggestion was to, a vote to approve with the conditions listed in the staff report, plus four additional conditions to include the approving of the planned phase paving. The location of propane as approved by the fire district, the fire access road as approved by the fire district. And the requirement for ten percent per square foot site of steering fencing around the perimeter.
That is correct. That's why you're so good at this.
And does that include? Yes. So, so are making a motion to approve with conditions, not going to be relating to have it written down once and then another motion.
We have to make a motion today. But I think it's motion to direct the staff to propose these in writing, so that was the guidance. The motion is to approve, asking staff to clarify and come back with final written findings.
That, that, that's what I was, finally, that you mentioned before, so it had on the front of us in the.
So again, that was the, all of the conditions listed in the staff report with four additional conditions. One, that the council approves the proposed phased paving plan, council approves the proposed propane use with approval from the fire district. Council approves the proposed second fire access with approval from the fire district and the council approves it with requirement of ten percent per square foot of site of steering fence.
That's correct.
That's the motion by council.
Motion, yeah, so.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion second. Is it for a re-discussion? Pass one?
Yeah, I just, um I appreciate the lively discussion, especially about the fence, because I do think you guys need a fence. I'm going to be perfectly honest with you. Uh but the way the code reads, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't improve the project. That's, that's where I'm at with it. Um I think that as those properties around you develop, you're going to see a need for fencing, especially depending on what goes in there. If you have a, you know, an auto body shop that goes in right next to you, I'm not going to say a charade park, you know, let's be honest, so consider it. Um but the way the code reads, I don't see any reason not to improve it.
Thank you, Counsel two. Question? Counsel three?
Um, I like this living wall fence. I think that is a nice alternative. We're trying to do something similar to that in our house, and so I really like that whole concept. And I apologize, you're right, it wasn't a matter of safety, it is a site of steering fence, and so I was wrong by thinking it's a safety issue. I still think it's a safety issue, but that's not what the code addressed, so we're talking about apples and oranges there. But I still think that the code requires that, so I think that we would still need a fence. I'm not at all comfortable about the fire access. I don't believe that's at all um a safe alternative. I never expected anybody would park along that. I'm simply thinking when people were leaving in case of a fire, some sort of emergency, they're not going to say, oh, we have to be very careful and go down this lane and do that. They're going to get in their car and they're going to get out. And, you know, hope they have all their kids in the car. At the same time, but I'm still not comfortable with that fire lane, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. It just makes me extremely uncomfortable. Propane, again, I said I was fine with. So I guess I would have to vote no on this motion.
How about? So I, first, I don't think there's anybody that I respect in Cave Junction, but I do our fire department, I think you guys are terrific. Uh with that being said, I'm cautious to approve the fire lane because I feel like it could open up a floodgate with future developments that you guys are going to have to oversee on a more regular basis because they're going to piggyback off, try to be exact. So my concern is making your job harder and not your job easier when it comes to saving lives, putting out fires, which is what your job is. And so that's, that's my hesitation in offense to that. Uh the code says fence, I, I can whisper to Gina here by to make sure that I read that right. It does say site of steering fence. I uh five and ten feet with a natural, you know, natural thing, a fire could take it out and there's nothing there. They could blow over and then there's nothing there. I, I think a fence needed a paving plan on regression. I am absolutely fine with it. I think that you guys did a great job like that out. Much more comfortable with that. I still think the five year overall is a bit long. But I, I understand it. It's a, you guys, I know that I'm playing devil's advocate a little bit over here, but I do want to see you guys, I really do. It's just getting it done. Um that's all I have.
The other comment I have is my experience with watching other developments put in plantings as barriers. Uh one of the things that happened is they don't get water. And I don't think something like that's going to work very well unless you have water there on time, which is, it's all, I have a garden and I know how much it takes to keep things going. Uh so that's my, a major concern I have about the, the planting itself. I'm totally been putting more real things in that, it's always a good thing to do. So we have a motion, restate, see if I can restate the motions. We have.
You might need Brian's help on this one.
We have a motion to approve the, the application of the conditions and.
Four additional conditions.
The four additional conditions and also to see the plant, the findings from them. I didn't say that right. Is that basically the motion? Okay, so there is no further discussion.
I'm.
Counsel two?
Hi.
Counsel three?
Yay.
Counsel four?
May.
Mayor votes aye. Motion passes three to. But still, we have. Findings. Yes. All right, so we're going to move along. We've got another one. Thank you, everybody. Spread. Now on agenda, item number eight, this also, this also is a public hearing. And so this will be a quasi judicial hearing for Little Pantry, which has previously come before this council and was approved with conditions on June fourteenth, twenty twenty one. That original approval has since expired and as they intend to continue with their development, they have prepared a new application for approval to continue. So I'm going to suspend, suspend the council meeting. And open to a public hearing and the members of the council, so the council will be as a public, as a public here. So um. So let me go back and have our little pantry starting. I have to read all this public stuff. So you might take a think. So this is a quasi judicial hearing for twelve oh one Green Valley Drive, Little Pantry. Tonight, we are conducting a public hearing for a site plan review request by Dre First for twelve oh one Green Valley Drive, assessors map twenty, thirty nine dash eight dash sixteen dash D B tax law number one two one. This is a quasi judicial decision and a quasi judicial ruling in what must be grounded in the relevant code, and if the application meets the code, the commission must approve it. If the council, the, the, this, excuse me, this council will now act as planning commission and will sit quasi judicial. This hearing will proceed as follows. After the preliminary legal matters, staff will make a presentation followed by the applicant. Any citizen who wishes to address the issues will be given the opportunity. Finally, there will be time for rebuttal by the applicant. The applicant will have fifteen minutes initially, plus ten minutes for rebuttal. Any member of the audience that wishes to speak must sign their name and address on the yellow sign of cards and provide the card to the city recorder prior to speaking. The planning commission members may ask questions of the applicant's staff or anyone else who testifies. I now call to order the public hearing. Legal matters, burden of proof. Criteria and appeal rights. The applicant has a burden of providing that the application is consistent with the City of Cave Junction's Department Code Comprehensive Plan and any applicable municipal code revisions. The criteria must be impressed, this hearing is municipal municipal code seventeen point one four point two one zero site plan review, application submission requirements. Municipal code seventeen point one four point zero three zero decision making procedures. Municipal code seventeen point one four point two five zero approval criteria, site plan review. Municipal code seventeen point two eight point zero one zero through one hundred C Commercial Oregon Uniform Fire Code, City of Cave Junction Comprehensive Plan and City of Cave Junction Transportation Plan. Any testimony, argument or evidence that speakers provide must be directed at these criteria or at some other criteria in the code or comprehensive plan which you believe should apply to this decision. If your testimony would be repetitious, but you would like the opportunity to appeal the decision, you must put your name and address on a yellow card, sign of card and hand this card to the city recorder. Before you speak. Only those who have appeared before the planning commission in person or in writing will have any standing to appeal this item. Prior to the conclusion of the first public hearing, on an application, the applicant or anyone who takes part in the hearing may request a continuance or ask that the record be left open to present additional information. If there is such a request, the coun, the council planning commission will either continue the public hearing to a date certain or leave the record open for at least seven days for additional written evidence, argument or testimony. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the council planning commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to this issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Conflicts of interest. Do any members of the council wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest or bias?
Council one.
No.
Council two.
No.
Council three, not I. Council four.
No.
And the mayor is no. Expartee contacts. Do any members of the council wish to report any site visits or expartee contacts? Council one.
Yes.
Council two.
No.
Council three, I visit the site when I voted Donald General.
Yes.
Council four.
Yes.
Uh, I guess the mayor must say I too. Because of the location. Let's see, challenges. Uh, to planning commission's jurisdiction. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the council to act as planning commission to hear this matter? See no challenges. Challenges to impartiality of any member of the planning commission. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the impartiality or ex parte disclosures of any member of the planning commission? See no challenges. And that concludes the legal matters. So next we'll have the staff report and presentation.
So again, for the record, I'm Ryan Nolan, contractor planner in Rogue Valley Council Governments. So we've seen this application before, it approved the. Site plan review for Little Pantry at a different location, and then the. City council saw this application and approved it. There was quite a bit of discussion with the applicant's engineer, and we discussed queuing several times and. How traffic would move on site. This was approved. Due to extenuating circumstances, development didn't begin um within the allotted time approved. By that decision, so the applicant is back tonight essentially asking for. Reapproval so that they can move forward with development in accordance with city policy. So. This is the same application as previously approved. It's just through the calendar issue again. A delayed beginning of development here again tonight, but that is our standard. Something's not been done within a year unless there was some other specific uh approval date. We have to reapply, and that just makes sure that as things change and code is updated and city council members change, that. Approvals of land use made with specific criteria and specific decision makers. So. We've reviewed this against the site plan review criteria um. The landscaping, the pedestrian connectivity, the on-site parking, city engineers reviewed the. Utility connections, ODOT reviewed this because of the proximity to the highway. The fire district provided comments. Again, all of those issues were thoroughly discussed and we approved it before and we missed here again the calendar. So if there are any questions. Um that you might have about a specific. City approval, I'd be happy to. Answer those staff suggestions that we approve this with the conditions listed in the staff report. We've worked again, the applicant is here, fire district is also.
I just had one quick question in regards to, oh, I'm sorry.
Are you? Yes, I should.
Uh, just one quick question in regards to the letter from the chief of model about the um. The address was requested to be put on Amby instead of Green Valley. In order for them to. Mitigate the situation if there was an emergency, and I didn't see a response to that, if the address was changed or not.
I said, I think the applicant has no problem with that, so staff will, when building permit process begins. Or approval of this, but essentially usually is. As we submit the zoning clearance to the county for a building permit, we will change the address at that time. So that would be a. A lease of project as the application is forward.
Okay. Counselor two, any questions?
No, thank you. But I read, reread the whole application, which. I wish you'd have started this before now, but um. I know. But there was one comment that I read that I don't remember that we addressed was concerns for people that use the dump. Site. And turning radiuses. I don't remember who wrote that or what the resolution to that was.
So at the first hearing, that was an item that we wanted for discussion. In the second hearing, Mark Cross brought in some diagrams to show how traffic would move on site. At that time, the council decided that he had it with, at least the majority felt that he had it with the breast. I don't. I think, I don't think those specific drawings were resubmitted, but I do know that Mark Cross prepared a little drawing and showed how he predicted that trucks would move for RVs would move through the site.
I just wanted to make sure.
I remember that that at a time satisfied.
Okay, I just want to make sure we have a resolution for it because as I reread stuff, I thought, well.
Some somebody's new on the commissions and on the councils. Okay, I think it was councillor Bosch who was not.
Right.
Satisfied with the response. The majority were were satisfied with Mark Cross's explanation of how he felt traffic would move across the site. And ODOT did not have any. I think councillor Bosch felt that it was too close to the highway, which projected queuing to back up on the highway. ODOT. Did not find them based on evidence. They felt that was.
Counselor four.
No.
Uh, I don't have any questions of staff, so at this time we will hear the applicant's presentation.
Council, I'm Chad Hansen, representing Little Pantry. And we don't have anything to add, but everyone else has already. Put the rundown from last time.
Okay. Counselor one, you have questions?
No questions.
Counselor two. Counselor three, no. Counselor four.
You guys have a start date.
Hopefully before we have to do this again.
That that actually was good.
Yeah, I mean, in the near future, um, you know. But if we're here again, it doesn't really mean this.
Okay, we might just see it. Excuse me, it's jumping ahead. Alright, so now we have public testing. I'll now be hearing for public comments. If you wish to testify during this hearing, you must complete a yellow card. Bring it up to the city recorder for approach to the code. You have three minutes to speak, and if you have. Uh, any written material or other evidence you would like us to see, please provide that at the beginning of the comment period. The city recorder will place a copy of any provided material in the permanent record for this here. So let's begin with speakers wishing to speak in support of this site plan review. I see no uh speakers wishing to speak in favor of it. Let's, do we have any speakers? Any speakers in opposition to this site plan review? That wasn't a hammer, it's a one. Oh, okay. Okay, so we don't need any rebuttal. Questions on the staff? Does uh does staff have any further comments or clarification regarding this application?
I think this is a, because we've discussed this twice before, I think this is simpler approval, and my suggestion would be. If this is the will of the council to approve with the conditions and staff report, that will be done and the mayor can sign those. Next week when they're presenting this report. If you would like, staff can prepare findings if there's some. Alternate conditions if you feel necessary. It doesn't appear that there are. So my recommendation would be a motion to approve with conditions as listed.
Thank you. Does any member of the council commission have any questions for the staff?
No.
Two?
No.
Counselor three, no.
No.
And neither does the mayor. So let's see. Have we received any requests for continuance? Alright, so. This, uh, okay, I will now reconvene reconvene the council meeting. I have to close this one first.
Yes.
Alright, I'm going to close the planning council commission. And I will now reconveal, excuse me, reconvene the council meeting.
So and I move that we approve this um. This um. Society plan review. Based on previous information with conditions posted.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a second as the, I mean, a motion and a second discussion. Counselor one.
No, let's get it going.
Counselor two.
No.
Counselor three, okay. Counselor four.
None of the staff.
Okay, so for the discussion, I'm going to call the vote. How do you go? Counselor one.
I'm.
Counselor two.
I'm.
Counselor three.
I.
Counselor four.
I'm.
And mayor voteside. Motion to approve the conditions. As the spizer. Okay, so we are now at the agenda item number eight, and we are on the agenda item number nine, which is executive session. I do have, we have. Anything for the executive session? So agenda item number ten is comments from staff, council, and staff. Uh, start with the city recorder. So our next council meeting will be September twenty sixth, and it looks like our recording is finally up and running, so that's exciting. Uh, we have three candidates certified to run for the next election. Melo Martel for mayor position, which is a two-year position, twenty-three and twenty-four. Ethan Lane for council position one, which is a four-year term, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. And then Jean Anne Miles for council position three, which is also a four-year term, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. That's all I have. Good, thank you. Uh, story to the council.
No, I just want to say thanks for the opportunity to talk. Thank you guys for your great plans, um, being willing to work with us and listen and get this figured out. Uh, thanks for the fire district. As always, they're helpful and on point and uh appreciate the team, yes.
I'll echo what Ethan said also. Thank you to Ryan for very clear staff reports and um. Guidance, council, really appreciate it. I feel like we don't know what we're doing up here, but so we appreciate your help. I'm just also really happy that we're actually moving forward. On a project, we have been wondering what the heck's going on, um, and then the RV park, we also are moving closer there, so. Hey, for everybody who's doing it. I have a couple of issues and and please forgive me, everyone, but um. There was a while ago. There was a while ago, we discussed parking on Hussey Street, especially during the summer. Um. Behind Taylor Sausage. And I drove by there today and there was a. Fifth wheel with no truck attached, so it looked like it was parked there for camping or something and needed to go to the RV park, and there wasn't one, so they parked on the street. Um, I'm assuming they went to Taylor's, but it never was. And then there was an RV, full-size RV, across the street. It made. Very difficult for parking over there. We had started to address this issue once, and I really think we need to come back to it. Because the fact that this um. One RV. The fifth wheel was just there was very disconcerting to me, and I will follow up and see if it's still there tonight. If so, it's violating no overnight parking violations within our city limits, so we definitely need to address that with sheriff's department. But um. I just, I am concerned about that parking situation on Hussey, and I think that we have. Checked it the can down the road enough, and it's time that we address that. So that's one concern I have. Uh, the other concern I have is about all the different um. Lots. In the city. Where there's. High grass from or weeds or whatever we want to call them. And I'm really grateful for the work on the Wells Street property, but there's lots of other sites around, and so I would really like to. Um, encourage citizens, and I know we've got three that are there watching, that will um. That people mow their lawns or weedy or do whatever they need to do so that things will be safe. I do not want to stand up in a situation like. Talent or Phoenix or Paradise or Weed or any of those because. Things start on fire. I live in an area that's highly. Forested, and I worry about that on a daily basis of. You know, whether things are weedy or if they're safe and green or what. Um. I want to thank everyone for being here. Thank you guys for being so patient and tolerant and everything, because I know that it's not easy, though it's worth the best. Um, Dale, I really would like to see you get something going there. I'm sorry, Mr. Hurst. I would really like to see something going there because um. Um. I I have worried about the homeless people that's that sit on your property, and I'm kind of going. We're supposed to have a little pantry there, not homeless people tents, so I would love to see that.
The only basically was.
And and we understand that because we had the same issue with work we've done in our park, so we do get from. My last comment is Jean Anne's chapter. And as I talk about weeds, this is be like a tree. Stay grounded. Connect with your roots. Turn over a new leaf. Bend before you break. Enjoy your unique natural beauty. And keep growing. And I think that that's something that is really good for all of us. That was by Joanne Raptis. So. And that's all. I wish you all peace and love.
Congratulations on the new position. Excited for you. Uh. Temperatures drop, I'm happy. That's all I've got.
I I just want to thank everybody for their participation in all the work you do in our community to make this a better place, and. That's what the council is trying to do, make sure that we uphold all the. Laws and order that says and make sure things, because we all care about this community, and I know you do too, and I thank you, Brian, for all the hard work you've put in. Uh, for the city of Cave Junction will be missed. Um, and I'm sure your placement will will be just fine with the movie. So um.
See, we intend to haunt you.
Are, um, I I guess I have no other comments, and I just want to thank everybody for being here. Your participation in my community. So I don't entertain a motion. Do you adjourn?
I move to adjourn. Be adjourned at just the.
Thirty seconds.